There we go.
Got it. The August 10th meeting of the Long Hill Township Planning Board is called to order at 7:34. Would the Secretary please read the notices?
Absolutely. Number one, call to order and statement of compliance, adequate notice that this meeting has been provided by posting a copy of the public meeting dates on the municipal bulletin board and website and by sending a copy to the Echo Sentinel newspaper and by filing a copy with the municipal clerk. Number two, standard board procedures, any hearing conducted by the board is quasi judicial proceeding. Any questions or comments must be limited to issues that are relevant to what the board may legally consider in reaching a decision. And decorum appropriate to a judicial hearing must be maintained at all times. Number three, meeting cutoff. Announcement is made that as a matter of procedure, it is the intention of the planning board not to continue any matter past 10:30 PM at any regular or special meeting of the board unless a motion is passed by the members then present to extend the meeting to a later specified cutoff time.
I was chastised in one of the minutes for putting those notices out of order with the pledge of allegiance. But we're going to do it in order tonight. Let's all stand for the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America to the Republic, which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, roll call. Deputy Mayor Ray.
Present.
Committeeman Verlisa is currently absent. Ms. Dill?
Here.
Mr. Hands?
Mr. Hands?
Yeah, sorry.
That's okay, thank you. Mr. Malinowski?
Here.
Mr. File?
Here.
Mr. Richardson is currently absent, will be joining us later. Vice Chairman Jones?
Present.
Chairman Sando?
Here.
Chairman, we have a quorum.
The next item on the agenda is the application for Elite on Valley Road and would someone like to explain what's happening?
Yolanda, that's you.
In her last official act.
I apologize, I was muted. This applicant is waiting, I believe, for approvals from the DEP before they come back to the board and they have requested an adjournment until your September 28th meeting. So what they are asking for the board to do this evening is to carry their application to September 28th without any further notice.
Does anyone have any comment or objection to that? I think we have a motion, please, to carry the Elite application to September 28th with no further notice.
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Alright.
Let's see your hands. Make sure your hand is somewhere in the screen so you can be counted. Fine, thank you. The next item on the agenda is meeting minutes, the approval of meeting minutes. And I am sure that you have all read them. But it is such a time consuming package that I'm going to ask you all to discuss them. And I will ask you to, if you want to pull any, and then we'll vote in one vote on adopting all that there are no changes or objections to.
Yolanda, do we have to vote on them individually?
Yes, because there, there may be member, board members that aren't eligible to vote on some of these because they were absent, they abstained, or whatever the case.
Well, yeah. Can we pull those for a separate vote?
Well, you really should because the board is required to make minutes, so the board really should vote on each individual set, you know, each individual date individually.
January 12th, does anyone have any comments?
Just before we do this, I have to admit, I have been so busy, I have not looked at any of them. So just take me out of the conversation.
Respect your silence.
I apologize.
Anyone have comments on January 12th? We've seen these before and they were sent back for a correction. If no one has any objections, how about a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
April 8th. We will be voting on the minutes of the meeting and the executive session in one vote because the same people attended. And everyone can vote on this except Committeeman Verlisa, who is absent anyway. Any questions or comments on April 8th? I have a motion, please.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
April 13th. Oh, there's a missing time in number 10, adjournment.
In April 8th, I think it was?
No, April 13.
April 13.
And I'm not sure why.
Yeah, I wasn't, I, I left that meeting. And it did not, so the second part of the meeting, if I recall, had a problem with the recording.
Oh yeah, that's the we took a break and didn't, didn't come back from that. You want to do a little more research on this?
Well, I tried to, I tried to go back in time and I watched that video and I don't remember what we discussed after that and because I wasn't taking notes, so I'm assuming it wasn't an application. Actually, I know it wasn't an application.
So the, so the board was in recess from 9:45 to 9:55 PM. Based on the fact that you had a discussion of master plan consistency review and a discussion during the new slash old business, I would suggest, and I would suggest that we make the adjournment time 10:30 PM as that's the standard board cutoff time.
How about before 10:30?
Absolutely, if you think, you think that's, if, if anybody has any different remembering, but 10:28.
No, just before 10:30. Anyone have any objection to that language?
No.
Okay, so so use the language just before 10:30 PM. Got it.
Can I have a motion, please?
No move. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Tom, raise your hand. Thank you. And David missed that one and he didn't raise his hand. Good, thank you. May 11th.
No, April 27.
What did I flip two pages at once? I guess I did. April 27th. Again, Mr. Hands was excused. And I have nothing to add to that. Anybody else? Going to have a motion to adopt the minutes of April 27.
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now let's do May 11th. And this one was, we were missing Deputy Mayor Ray. Anyone have any comments? Or questions? Or suggested changes? And there is Mr. Elisa. Welcome, just in time to vote on the minutes of May 11th. Can I have a motion?
No move.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Next, I have May 25. Minus Mr. Hands. I have nothing. Does anyone else have anything?
Still moved.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
June 8th. And I will start that parade. At number agenda item number eight, paragraph three. Line two. It says former car wash. I think it's more correct to say current car wash.
Okay, current car wash?
Current, change to the word former to current.
Okay, done.
And at on the third page at the top in paragraph four. Ms. Dill has a correction to make.
I'm sorry?
Ms. Dill has a correction to make in that paragraph. I can't hear you, your mic is off.
It should, yeah, Ms. Teresa, look at that.
Your mic is off.
Thank you.
Okay, now you want to make the correction?
Can you spell my name right?
Actually, I missed half your name. Finally, we, oh, we need to vote on this and this will excuse, exclude Deputy Mayor Ray. Can I have a motion?
Motion to accept is amended.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
I'm going to your state.
Someone is shouting.
Hearing voices.
Is that you, Victor? Are there voices?
I think it might be on my end, I'm going to mute.
Oh, now he's gone mute. June 22. Missing Mr. Malinowski and Mr. File. And this will be a vote on the regular meeting and the executive session that followed. Any comments or questions?
Still moved.
Second? Second, I have a second.
Second.
Mr. Jones has seconded. All in favor of adopting?
Aye. Aye.
Finally, we have July 13. All except Mr. File. Any questions or comments?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. Thank you very much, Deborah.
We will not get that behind again, I promise.
We should, we should skip more meetings so you have more time to keep the minutes up to date. And now I've lost my agenda. All the shuffle. Next is the schedule of applications. Did you get that out to us yet?
Unfortunately, I did not have time within the last three days. I've gotten in three applications and have, have been told of two applications that are coming this week. So I was not able to do appropriate updates, so I, but I will do that on Thursday and send it out to everybody for the end of the week.
Would you give us a briefing on any applications that might come to us?
Unfortunately, all I know right now is, oh, actually, you may, you have a, the, a park request for a pre-application review for a three lot subdivision. But other than that, I don't know, I've not heard any applications coming to, mostly everything is for the zoning board at this time.
At our reorganization meeting, I suggested that since Park was, pre-application review committee was so infrequent that we would wait until we had an application come in. We have an application, it's a three lot residential subdivision in Millington. And I think we should hear it, there is, there is good reason to suggest that Park would be valuable. So I will ask Deborah to schedule that for seven o'clock before our next meeting in September. And I will look for some volunteers. Mr. Jones. Mr. File. Mr. Hands, and I'll join in. Liz, you'll be there, I think that's appropriate for this one. Because there is a street right of way issue involved.
Do we want, do, can, the, Mr. Chairman, would it be appropriate if I could request maybe that we do it on another Tuesday night prior to because we can do, we'll be doing, we can do it on Zoom.
So, no, no, let's hold it till the meeting, this is not, this is not critical, this has been sitting waiting to happen for over three years that I'm aware of. And I'm sure that there's, I haven't checked, but there's probably a new owner who's impatient, but I don't see that I don't see that that would force a new meeting, a separate meeting. Mr. Jones?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. I'm just as much as everybody wants to get back to normal, however, we do need to keep an eye on what COVID is doing, so I would request that be some flexibility. A flexibility could be in the form of a Zoom meeting or delaying the review, the park of this applicant.
Well, as long as you brought it up, I think this is an appropriate time to discuss. The Township Committee has not yet announced whether it will be live in the courtroom or on Zoom next week. Maybe Deputy Mayor has some further advice on that.
I think, and as of now, Dennis, we are planning on being in the courtroom, but we'll be, you know, everybody will be masked up.
I would propose that as long as the mask regulations are in place, that if we have an application hearing, we go to the courtroom with masks. If we have business, just board business like tonight, we can do it on Zoom. I propose that as a compromise situation. Does anybody have any comment?
Yeah, I countered that proposal with regard to do with re-Zoom, simply because it's easier to look at information and ask questions as opposed to trying to look at some chart that's over in the corner that nobody can see. And the rustling of papers while everybody's in within three feet of each other trying to look at maps in front of them or on a screen with a computer, if you brought your computer, I find that Zoom has more flexibility, it also gives greater opportunity for residents to connect in, there's always going to be the caveat, the small delta of individuals can't connect and we're going to have the same problems when we're doing it in the courtroom, or we'll have a small group that cannot either make it to town hall or there, or whatever the, the challenge is to them, so we're never going to achieve 100% appreciation or acceptability for everybody, however, I, I would prefer to do it via Zoom.
How about some other opinions?
I agree with Thomas completely.
Yeah, I, I can carve a tone.
You prefer Zoom?
The only issue, only issue about that is then, is that the long term solution? So once this all resolves, my issue is sitting for two hours, three hours with a mask, that's, that's what I don't really want to do. But that's just personal, you know, preference and comfort. By the way, if you go to Zoom for an application, basically, do we continue with that? When do we go back to being in the courtroom? I agree on this other meeting, it's fine.
Masks aren't required.
For the record, I see Mr. Richardson at 7:55.
I don't. Hey, how's everybody?
Thank you, David. Mr. Malinowski, your opinion?
It doesn't matter to me, whatever the board decides is fine. I prefer not to wear a mask, but if that's what's mandated, I will do it.
Ms. Dill?
Yeah, I don't, I think Zoom is fine until we don't have to wear masks because I don't, I prefer not to wear a mask either. So if we have to wear a mask, we might as well be on Zoom, is my opinion.
Don, we're discussing whether or not we should strictly continue with Zoom until the mask restrictions are lifted, or whether we should try to hold some meetings in the courtroom even if they involve masks.
I would I would recommend that we just continue with Zoom, I think we're used to that and it's fine.
And Mr. Chairman, we know this is a very fluid environment right now with COVID, I deal with it on a day to day basis. Just for the operational aspects of, of my employer and in my employment. So at, at any moment, it could pivot back the other way and we could come back into the courtroom, but for now, I prefer to be not wearing a mask in close proximity.
Aren't you glad you're not on the Board of Education two weeks from the start of school? Okay, I'll, I'll go with the majority and we'll stick with Zoom meetings for, until the governor lifts the mask, indoor mask mandate. And this is without prejudice to any decision that the Township Committee or the zoning board might make for their meetings.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I wouldn't solely rely on just the governor, I would also take a recommendation from the CDC as well.
Oh God, is there any higher, is there any higher authority, the World Health Organization?
Yeah, well, welcome to my world. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you for bringing it up. The next item on the agenda is the, a discussion of the area in need of redevelopment study. As we talked at the last meeting, the Township Committee has directed the planning board to conduct that study. And at the last Township Committee meeting, the Township Committee appointed Township Planner Jessica Caldwell to produce a report for the board to consider while it is making that recommendation as to whether or not the car wash site is an area in need of redevelopment. I have had a discussion with Ms. Caldwell about the nature of her recommendations. And we'll try to keep it a little bit more to the point and a little bit briefer than the last time we did this two years ago. At this point, I have also told her not to, not to expect being ready until at least November because of the application load in front of us. And that'll close out the years conducting that determination by the planning board as to whether or not the car wash is indeed an area in need of redevelopment. That's as far as it has gone right now. Are there any questions? Mr. Jones?
And thank you, Mr. Chair. I think it would be prudent for everyone to take a look at the the zoning criteria. It's very well laid out. Just to understand what that, what that means when we're talking about a redevelopment study.
Well, yeah, this is not, this is a determination that the area, the car wash lot is an area in need of
In need of redevelopment. There is a criteria for determining an area.
There are criteria and
I'm happy to set it around to everyone just so they have it at their fingertips.
Have you, have you got that to distribute?
Yes, I do. I'm looking at it, yeah.
And, and you, you could also read the report from the redevelopment study of two years ago, which also lists the criteria. This is different from the previous because the proposed redeveloper has already been heard by the Township Committee. And so this is not an entirely blind study that we have to conduct. We know what the, we know what the ultimate goal is.
Right, Chairman, but this is a blind study. This is an, only an area in need of redevelopment study regardless of who the ultimate developer may or may not be, that may change, no one knows that. No one knows what's going to happen in the future. People go bankrupt every day and then we have to look at somebody else. When this
Would you outline the steps between our determination and a shovel in the ground?
There, there are many steps that have to go on between the board's determination and a shovel in the ground. The Township Committee has already performed step, step one, which is to send this to the planning board for a determination as to whether or not this, it truly is an area in need of redevelopment. The planning board will look at the report that is going to be generated by your professional, the Township Planner. And you will determine based upon her testimony and any testimony, oh, I'm sorry, any testimony from any objectors planner. And the board will make that determination that this may not be a one and done in one hearing. Once the board makes a determination, if that determination is yes, that this should be designated, then the Township Committee will have to designate it later by resolution and then later they will have to designate this by ordinance and there will be a plan that will take time. By the time that the Township Committee negotiates a plan and negotiates a redeveloper agreement and enacts an ordinance to that effect and that ordinance, the redevelopment ordinance will effectively supersede the zoning in that area that's there right now, if this is designated as an area in need. That usually takes a, a number of months, it all depends on how quickly the negotiations are proceeding and whether everyone is happy with the result of the negotiation. Sometimes areas are recommended for designation and they don't get designated for years or they never get designated because the parties, meaning the municipality and the developer, never come to any consensus with regard to the terms of the redeveloper agreement, so I can't really say how much time it could take, but it could take a long time. But it will take at the least, at least a couple of months after the board makes its determination. And it, it doesn't really matter whether or not anyone has negotiated anything prior to the board determination. That should not figure in the board's deliberations at all.
And if the board determines that this is not an area in need of redevelopment, as we did two years ago.
Then the governing body has the power to either accept that recommendation and acknowledge it and simply go nowhere with any negotiation, or the governing body has a, has the right to override that recommendation and still designate the area in need. But there, there needs to be a, a report and this first step needs to be concluded and it needs to be followed before the governing body can make and it needs to be followed before the governing body can make, um, alternate findings and find that it, you know, it does qualify as an area in need. But ultimately, um, the power rests with the governing body.
And neither determination stops anyone, any developer from coming to the board with a site plan and asking for authority to construct something different there.
Correct. In, in other words, it even, you know, um, normally it doesn't happen. Once a developer has negotiated a redevelopment agreement, presumably that, uh, they've negotiated, you know, to their own benefit and not detriment. So they are generally not going to come in and ask for site plan approval based on the underlying zoning after they've negotiated a redeveloper agreement. But in theory, you are correct, uh, the, the underlying zoning remains. It's just that this redevelopment agreement, because redevelopment, remember, uh, is, um, it pertains to quote unquote blighted properties. It pertains to properties that otherwise would not be developed in accordance with the underlying zoning.
But you, you keep saying if there is a redevelopment agreement, but there doesn't even have to be a redevelopment agreement. If someone, if someone just simply wants to buy the property and build another mini mall, there is, there is no reason why the area in need study would interfere in any way with the, uh, site plan application.
Okay, so you're saying that the person who negotiates this redevelopment zone, either.
Stop talking redevelopment. Just talk about, this does not in any way encumber the, the lot or the current owners from selling their property to do anything that the purchaser wants to do.
No, that's absolutely true because, you know, um, if, if a landowner, it doesn't matter which landowner, i- if the landowner does not want to take advantage of this, they are perfectly, uh, they're allowed to take advantage of the underlying zone, underlying zoning. Although then I don't know why they're negotiating redevelopment, but that, that's another story. I, I don't know the ins and outs of any specific, um, you know.
To the best of my knowledge, there is no redevelopment agreement in place or under negotiation.
Well, no, 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 at this point, no, and there wouldn't be and there cannot be. Uh, for, the first step is to send this to the planning board for a determination, for a recommendation, whether or not, uh, and for a hearing, obviously. Because the only time that there is a hearing on the redevelopment area is before the planning board. There are no future hearings. Obviously, there's a public hearing also, always, on the adoption of an ordinance, but it's not the same. At that point, the designation has already been completed. But in order to discuss whether or not the designation should even occur, that occurs in front of the planning board during this process. So regardless of what the recommendation is, in order for a designation to occur based on a regulation, uh, best, based on the board's recommendation or even overriding the board's recommendation, it has to be based on the findings that are made and the evidence produced, the report produced during this hearing. This is the only time that the public gets to be heard in the redevelopment process.
Liz, do you have anything to add?
No, I, I think once, uh, maybe this was a question you were getting at. It, it, once that there is a redevelopment plan adopted, which is way down in the process, depending on how, sometimes the plans are structured so that they supersede any of the underlying zoning and sometimes structured so that they're overlays. And if it's structured so that it's an overlay, then what you asked before, supposing somebody came in and said to the owner, oh, we want to build a shopping center here, even though there is a, a, a plan in place to build assisted living or whatever, that they could, if it's an overlay. But if it's, um, structured that it, it supersedes the underlying zoning, then actually the only thing that could be built there, and you'll have to correct me if I'm wrong, would be what's permitted in the reuse, air redevelopment.
You're, you're right.
That's, that's all the way down the road.
We call that legal spot zoning.
Yeah.
That's all way down the road.
That is.
Yeah.
Brendan, do you have anything to add?
No, nothing from me. Dennis?
Well, we look forward to serving the Township Committee's request. Don't we? Uh, anything else that anyone wants to discuss on area in need of redevelopment? If not, I'm going to try to not discuss this again until it's on the agenda and we've got a, uh, study in place in front of us, a report in place from, uh, Ms. Caldwell, so that we can begin to get serious about this. Otherwise, there's not much we can talk about between now and then.
Good, Dennis, if I might, just a quick question.
Go.
Yeah, could you remind me what is a time scale or timeframe for this or it's just as soon as possible?
There is no timeframe because like all developments in town, the, uh, the gating issue is sewer connections. So all the projects that we are talking about or have talked about are in limbo until the, uh, sewer capacity has been extended by the, uh, utility. So we're talking about a, of, a four-year process to get anything built. So I don't.
In terms of the study, there was no time scale set, right?
No, not, there was nothing, nothing was imposed upon us.
Okay.
Now, the last one we saw actually did have a time scale. Uh, the, the 2018 area in need study did have a time constraint because the redevelopment agreement under negotiation was in question because of the DEP's wetland determination and an alternate residential component had to be worked out. And so we had to deal with it, uh, on fairly short order. But the, as I don't see that that applies now. All right. The next item on the agenda, site plan application exceptions. This is genuinely a discussion item. And I solicit your opinions. There are two situations going on in town right now that I think the planning board should have an understanding of its role. I'm saying that uh, as vaguely as I can. The first one of these is Mike's Music. Y'all know Mike's Music. It's been there since, the building has been there since the nineteen twenties. As a matter of fact, about the front third of the building actually lies in the county right-of-way. And yet it is an existing building and an applicant has come to the zoning officer and asked for a zoning permit to open a permitted use within the building. The zoning officer has granted a zoning permit, which means that the applicant is free to apply for construction permits and start constructing, even though a third of the building lies within the county road right-of-way. And there is some feeling in town by the beautification committee and others that maybe that building is an eyesore. So the question is, oh, the other, the other aspect of this is because it fronts on a county road, the county planning board gets to vote on the application also. And if they reject it, then for any reason, including the fact that it lies in the county right-of-way, if they reject it, then the project is dead. If they do not reject it because they respect the grandfathering issues, then there is nothing to stop the construction official from issuing construction permits and this goes ahead. In any event, the planning board has not seen it and apparently under the current ordinance does not have to see a site plan or go through the hearing process. And my question for the members of the board is, is this one that you would like to see? And if so, how do we change the ordinance?
Why would we want to see it, Dennis?
Same here.
Who wants to go first? All right, let's, let's start with, uh, Tom Jones.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, I would like to, uh, to, to, to see, uh, this application. Not sure where, where in the language we need to make the change in the ordinance to do this. And maybe we'll be, maybe the county will come in and help us by, um, not granting, uh, this application, the ability to go forward, then by chance it will have to then come back to us.
But will it come back to us? Is it dead, I thought, if, if they say no?
Well, if the county says no, then the, the, any app, presumably any application for a permitted use in that building would be rejected and the property owner will have to figure out something else to do.
So would we have to change to permitted use? No.
No, it's a restaurant, it's a permitted use. And the music shop that was there is a permitted use. So we can't, we can't, we can't block it on permitted use. My concern has to do with parking. And apparently the grandfathering, uh, provisions apply because this building predates the zoning ordinance by maybe a ten years or more.
Did, did you, did you say that it might be a restaurant? Is that what the applicant is?
That's the application that has been granted a zoning permit.
It's a very small building for, for it to be a restaurant.
Can't argue about that.
I thought it was going to be a, a takeout restaurant.
Drive-through, no parking, drive-through.
No, I, I mean, I think, Dennis, why would we want to see it? Just because of the parking issue?
Did you, did anybody bought the zoning offer, officer to, uh, opine on this issue?
Yeah, please, go ahead, thank you.
Do we have the zoning officer with us?
You do. Let me just change hats, hold on. Okay.
Thank you.
So currently, the, the current, um, applicant that wants to use the, the location as a restaurant, it, he's just proposing, when he came to me, he was just proposing takeout only. So no restaurant seating inside, just takeout, using the existing parking law, just as Mike's Music he did for one or two cars at a time, you know, not, and they were going to be doing delivery as well. Since that, and because they are not doing any changes to exterior of the building other than maybe paint or, you know, some landscaping, they actually don't need the county approval because we're giving them the use, the use approval. If they change anything to the structure, any structures, maybe they add additional pavers on the front in the county easement. If they, if they change the, the rear portion to add some parking, if they change a window or a door or an awning or something to that effect, then they need to come to the board for a site plan, period, and to the planning board of Morris County. That being said, my recent conversation with one of, I don't, I don't remember if it was an owner or if it was a representative of the gentleman who wants to open this restaurant, it has since been my understanding that they are actually doing, they are looking to do some site improvements, which in that case, it's coming to the planning board, period. So, but as the current, if somebody wanted to go in there and just do minor, um, you know, kitchen, it, all interior work, other than just making the building look nicer and cleaning up the landscaping, they can do that without coming to the board.
The master plan does not talk about beautification. And so, a- and of course, the ordinance doesn't talk about beautification as an issue, although we do, we do talk about tree plantings. We don't have a standard for beautification. So there is every reason to believe that Mike's Music could persist through this new use. And is that something that the planning board feels strongly enough about that we want to find a way to change the ordinance and bring that in front of the board?
So are you trying to have some standard for beautification? And, 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 and use the, basically impose some committee's idea of beauty into, uh, or, uh, into some kind of architectural standard?
Add the word.
Trying to?
If you add the word egregious to your question, the answer is, isn't that what the planning board is all about? And, and, and it's, this is an open discussion.
I feel like this is, uh, like we're trying to do a flanking maneuver to do a catch-all as opposed to not just allowing it to come before the board as a normal process.
This one may be unstoppable, uh, depending on how, uh, the county rules, if they have to rule. But I'm looking to the future. Is this the sort of thing that we would like to have review over?
All right. Because, okay. So Dennis.
David's turn.
Yeah, just, just a quick question. Deb, has this actually been submitted? Or is this just a?
It has been submitted and the zoning permit has been issued.
Then we can't discuss, can we discuss this? We can't, there's nothing we can do, right?
There's no application. We can discuss it because there's no application in front of the board and we're talking about.
It's been submitted, though.
We're talking about futures. We're talking about futures.
But, but Dennis, I understand.
At this moment, the, 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 this particular zoning permit is, is out of our hands. And so it's only an example of, uh, a future situation.
But, but, but Dennis, so I understand it, right? It's going to come before us, if what, what Deborah said is coming before us anyway. So are you talking about if Mike's Music Store or something like it, there's some group within town that considers it not a nice building and the, I, 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 a new business comes in and, 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 and wants to con, wants to conduct something there, you're wanting the planning board to be able to kind of step in and then, uh, uh, make changes or have, or have the new business come before us as a layer, as an, as an additional layer of bureaucracy? Is that what you're, is that what you're, is that what you're suggesting?
It has to do with the question of whether or not the bulk standards are being met. In other words, front yard setback and parking standards are being met. And in any other circumstance, if this were not a grandfathered building, the grandfathered uses, it would come to the board. In this particular case, uh, since the uses apparently have been permitted ever since the nineteen twenties, they've got the right to put a, uh, permitted use in the building as long as they get permission from other authorities with jurisdiction. And at this point, it's only the county planning board that has jurisdiction. As long as they don't affect the exterior.
Right, right, but I mean, we, we do this all the time where things are grandfathered, right? I mean, I, I would say you don't like that building, so therefore you want to bring it, you, you want to kind of bring it before us and, and, and add a layer of hassle to the, to the new business owner.
Well, the, the question in this case is, the question in this case is the setback and parking issues, which are clearly not, uh, in conformance with the existing ordinance. Now, in, in any other case situation that you're describing, if they meet all the requirements for a zoning permit, fine. But if this were not grandfathered, it would not meet the zoning requirements as far as setback or parking are concerned and it would have to come to the board.
But it's grandfathered.
But it's grandfathered, right?
So, okay.
Chime in at any time, Deborah.
Uh, Mr. Jones, you go first.
Thank you, Deborah. I don't think we need to make any changes. It's pre-existing, it's a grandfather, we're going to have more of those, uh, around. And as roadways change and right-of-ways change, uh, you know, the, these things are, are going to show themselves. So I don't, I don't, it doesn't, if you recall, there used to be a structure behind, uh, Mike's Music Shop, which has since been taken down. So that's probably going to give it more, uh, parking opportunities.
So that's probably gonna give it more, uh, parking opportunities. But I, I don't think we should be making any changes. I think the ordinance, the way they're written is fine. I don't want to include the word beautification because that's too, um, too wide, too much room for interpretation. And anyone who looks at something will see things differently. Um, but the minute they move a brick, then it comes back to us, you know, on the outside. And then we have another discussion. That's my
Ms. Dill, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I agree with Tom. I'm just kind of of the mindset that if it's not before us, I don't, I don't see that we need to do anything about it right now. One, we've got enough to do. And two, it sounds like there's, uh, there's a good chance it comes before us anyway. So that's what I think.
Well, the question again is, uh, what do we do to set up for the future for a comparable situation? Not that I can think of a comparable situation, because Mike stands out on Valley Road as, as a unique situation. But I'm, I'm just looking to see if the, perhaps the criteria for allowing a zoning permit to be issued by, uh, staff rather than by the board is a little bit too vague. Anyone who hasn't spoken have an opinion on this. I'd like to hear some more.
What, what is the front setback exactly on the building?
The front setback is about minus twenty feet.
Minus twenty feet. So it is in the county right-of-way?
The, the front third of the building is in the right-of-way, a- as well as obviously the front steps.
How, not, not that this is our jurisdiction, but how would you ensure a building that's in a right-of-way?
I don't know. I do know that at this point, since the building is vacant, it is tax exempt. And has been ever since Mike died.
I mean, that, that would seem like a building that is in need of redevelopment, to me.
Yes, but someone has to ask for, uh, ask the township committee to start that process. And so far, no one has asked.
Township committee could start on their own, couldn't they? I, i- if, if it was so deemed, I mean, I'm not telling them to, but.
We'll have to let Deputy Mayor has gone blank, but, uh, yep.
Well, that would be one way around it.
Mr. File.
It would, it would seem to me that if the, if the planning board and the township committee felt that, um, the building as it stands is, is, is one of the worst eyesores probably in the county. Maybe the path should be to lobby the, uh, the, 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 the county planning board. I'm, I'm, obviously, we don't want that building to remain there.
No, I'm sorry, but was this obvious stuff that we don't, that we don't want it to be there?
That place is a mess. It should have been torn down years ago.
No, I, I, I absolutely don't agree.
Well, good.
This is, this is government at its worst, coming in and, and imposing its own ideas and on, on what things should look like. We have ordinances, we have, uh, we, we, we have laws and regulations and all the rest of it. Let's just stick with them rather than saying, rather than making rules for a building that we don't like.
No, it's not a question, Brendan, just to be clear, it's not a question of whether we like the building. It's a question of whether or not it satisfies the setback and parking requirements that exist today.
I think twice, I think there are a number of times during this conversation that the building's been called an eyesore. That your, your, uh, ideas about parking and everything else are a thin veneer for what's really behind it, which is you don't like the building. That's it. And, and, and I'm not in favor of, of changing, of, 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 of changing ordinances so that, uh, uh, groups within the town can, can impose their ideas on how, on how the place should look. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a potentially a viable business that has been there since the twenties. I don't find anything necessarily wrong with it. If somebody comes in and wants to, and, and, and makes a viable business out of it, then that's what the town needs, and that's what I'm, 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 I'm happy to have, rather than putting on some, some idea, some, some extra layer of bureaucracy to the poorer business people who want to come in and start something up in Long Hill.
Okay, I got that. Don, do you have anything? You haven't, I haven't heard from you.
I think we let municipal land use law dictate the scope and expectations that, um, come before us. I know it's a bit reactionary in that regards, but that's how it's been set up. And we stay within the bounds of what we're intended to do as applications are presented. So I, I, I have to agree with Tom and others in regards to the statement that, you know, let's let this be and, and, and move on to more important business.
David.
Just, just add a couple of quick comments. Um, I agree. I mean, I don't think there's nothing we can do about it now. It's grandfathered, so let it come before the board. And we'll see what they say. I mean, they may not be able to get what they need for parking, et cetera, but that's to be decided at that time. At any point, I just want to have a little point. That, that building plus members is this. And you remember the one that's now the Goddard School, uh, yeah, the Goddard School, right? That building was right on the edge of probably right-of-ways as well, those two buildings, and they're both gone. So whether that is, is a precursor to this building at some point in time. But the thing is, did you maybe speed that up or let natural course take its course? So many points is, I think those buildings close are, are troublesome because of, um, the dangerous condi- conditions. They, especially something that could be as frequently used as a takeout versus, uh, you know, the good Mike's Music Store back in the day. But we'll, we'll debate that and discuss that when the application, if it comes before the board.
Okay.
Final point.
Alright, I've heard enough on this. Anyone, uh, opposed to stopping this discussion? And we'll move on to the next one.
For the record, I like the building.
You like the building?
There's nothing wrong with the building. I'm, I'm, I'm with you, Tom. I'm just, I think it's fine.
I like it, but not where it is. If it was somewhere else, it'd be okay. It's just where it is.
Hi, Mr. Chair, sorry for that.
Okay.
Just a point of clarification on that, Chairman. If there's any expansion, uh, i- in the use in that building, it is not going to come before the planning board. It'll, it will find its way before the zoning board. But I don't know anything about this to be able to say whether or not that, that would happen.
Well, it's a permitted use. And, and we have, in, in two thousand sixteen, we passed an ordinance to broaden the list of permitted uses in the Valley Business District. And, uh, there's almost nothing you couldn't squeeze into that building, assuming you recognize the, uh, uh, the small footprint.
Understood. Alright, so, uh, when you're talking about grandfathering, you're not talking about the usual, um, the, the way that the term is usually understood in that this is a use that is no longer permitted, but was once permitted. That's what, that's what we call grandfathering. So I, I misunderstood this conversation because I have no idea.
Well, my, my assumption is that grandfathering applies not only to use, but to the bulk requirements that might have changed in the meantime.
You know what? I would have to take a look at the application and, and, uh, compare it to the zoning ordinance because I don't know that that's correct. Uh, and it also depends on whether or not there was site plan approval, whether site plan approval is required. That, that's something we would have to look at. I, I don't know. I can't
There can't, there cannot have been site plan approval because this predates the zoning ordinance by a decade.
Uh, right. Um, well, at this point, if a zoning permit has been issued, there's no point in having any more of a discussion. And we just changed the zoning ordinance not too long ago to loosen, um, the, uh, situations, uh, where someone would have to find themselves before a planning board for site plan application.
Once again, I'm not talking about this having to go before the planning board for site plan. Uh, I'm only talking about whether or not a comparable situation should be vulnerable to a zoning permit simply because, uh, it, all the, uh, criteria are grandfathered.
I'm not sure what you mean by criteria grandfather, but I guess
Both use and bulk, both use and bulk.
Okay.
If this, if this were, if this were before the planning board, then there would be, uh, certainly be question about whether it meets the bulk and parking standards.
Okay, if we're talking about just use in bulk, that goes to zoning board. The playboard only considers bulk variances when they are tied to site plan approval or subdivision approval or conditional use approval. But the, the, uh, but the, the planning board never, uh, looks at bulk variances in a vacuum. That's the zoning board's job.
Are you sure?
Yeah, yes.
Well, if there's a site plan, if there's a site plan that comes before us, uh, we usually have bulk issues.
Yeah, if you have a site plan, a site plan application that comes before you and there are bulk variances tied to that site plan application, then yes, the, the planning board gets to look at bulk variances when they are tied to
Right, but a site plan, a site plan application was not required in this case because the zoning permit was issued on the base of the fact that there was no change from prior bulk and there was a, and it was a permitted use. But since, since at least two members of the board like the looks of the building.
Alright, can we table this now? Can we table this?
Uh, the, the other question that I have, and again, we're talking about a discussion item, is the biggest construction project going on in town this year. The biggest, most expensive construction project, probably a roughly fifty million dollar project, has not come before either board. And again, that was a decision that is in keeping with the ordinance and interpretation of the ordinance as far as issuing zoning permits. And so neither board has seen this and the public has not had an opportunity to comment. And that fifty million dollar project would be the, uh, PSE and G power line. And you can see that construction has already begun on Myersville Road, on Mountain Avenue, and on, uh, uh, Morristown Road. Construction is in progress, which will probably last many, many, many months to replace all those lattice towers with monopoles. That has, that presumably were, the zoning permit was issued because all of our criteria were met. But again, the biggest project in town hasn't, uh, does not have an opportunity to go before the, either board.
I'm shrugging my shoulders. I don't know why I wouldn't come.
There's no change of use. It's a permitted use. Uh, utilities are permitted in all zones. And it's simply a replacement of one tower with a different tower.
Okay, next project.
Now, the question, the question is
The question, the bigger question is, what's the height of these? I mean, what if they're putting a three hundred foot towers? Uh, for the, for the, uh, for the stanchions. I mean, that's what should come before us is the height issues. Are they, if they're replacing, then that's suggesting they're staying within the tree line and the existing height of those towers.
I can't know that because we don't have drawings.
Exactly. All you need to do is go down through Chatham and see the monopole, and those are a lot higher than what they replaced.
Do we have any C and, and, and the height? Do we have any C in any of those?
The, the, in Chatham, the monopoles are about fifty feet higher on average than the lattice towers that they replaced.
That's not the question.
Yeah, but, but what if we, what if we say, no, no, fifty feet's way too much. We only want forty feet. I don't think we can do a thing about it.
That's correct. We can't do a thing about it.
So why would we waste our time talking about it and, and complaining?
I only mention it because we have spent an awful lot of time and listened to a lot of public comment on projects that are a lot smaller than this. This is a, this will turn out to be a major, uh, aesthetic as well as, uh, construction dislocation for the town. And nobody has any oversight and no one has listened to the public. And that, that is fundamentally my concern. Is there, is there something we should do?
They'll bring it to the township committee and voice their opinion there. Again, I don't think there's anything that we can do about it.
And as a practical matter, since this is a, utilities are regulated elsewhere by the state and the feds. And this got fed, this project has federal approval already. There probably isn't much we could do about it anyway.
Why are we talking? I'm sorry. I, I didn't mean that, that.
Just bringing to the board's attention, uh, a, a perspective issue, that's all.
I think, uh, Dennis, just to interject, I think I understand when we don't have any ability to affect change. But at least, at a minimum, there should be some plans available and notification. And maybe that's something we could take up through the board, um, you know, township board, to at least understand what the plans are. I, I, I understand we don't, we can't affect change, but that just seems to be right to do when you're doing that kind of dramatic change to a utility infrastructure. That's all. I'm all for bolstering our infrastructure, believe me.
Well, the, the curious part about this is that the, uh, the tower on the top of Long Hill, between Long Hill Road and Hickory Tavern Road, that tower has cell antennas on it. And before the uh, lattice tower comes down, the cell antennas have to be kept in service. And so T-Mobile has applied to install a separate standalone temporary tower for their cell antennas. Uh, and then when the new tower is up, they'll move them back to the new tower. The, the, the confusing part is that that application went to the zoning board. And the zoning board has already held three hearings on the temporary tower for the cell antennas. But nobody's heard anything about the other twenty-five towers that are being replaced throughout the town from one end to the other. And that, to me, is a priorities issue. Why are we spending three meetings of the zoning board talking about a temporary tower? Uh, and not dealing with the major issue that caused the temporary tower?
It's a quick comment, uh, not to belabor this, this. I, I agree with, with Don. It would be interesting to know if there's some way that these, and, you know, they're gonna do it now. It won't be done for another hundred years, right? But when a situation where there's no responsibility or need for that type of public discussion, even if it's just, you know, township committee, just, I don't know if they did, I don't know. At least, um, ask people to come in and just give a presentation, explain what's going on. I think, you know, some, some level of, uh, not necessarily oversight, but some level of, um, discussion, not even discussion, just, I'm sure, because the presentation at some level would be helpful for everybody, I'm sure.
Is that JCP and L?
That's PSE and G. The JCP and L line, the JCP and L line comes up through Gillette, their substation in Gillette, near the Berkeley Heights border, and then shoots off to Chatham, and we hardly ever see it. Because it goes to Chatham through the, uh, parkland along the river. Uh, this, the PSE and G line starts down at King George Road by Route seventy-eight and winds up crossing Myersville Road and heading out to Chatham on the north side of Myersville Road. It's a much bigger operation. And just for the record, since it was built in the mid nineteen twenties, it's almost a hundred years old. And PSE and G, for some reason, put it on the National Register of Historic Places. So in fact, they are destroying a national register asset, but they have the right to do that because they own it.
Well, we'll move that national register, uh, over to Mike's music, and then we'll let the rest take care of itself.
Deb, can I just ask, did you see anything about this? Did, did you get any paperwork or anything about the, uh, the power line?
Two years ago, yes. And the zoning permit was issued, I think, last year. I had to pull it up.
About, it was about, almost two years ago.
Or two, yeah, twenty nineteen, I think it was issued by Tom Delia. And, um, unfortunately, I have been searching the last couple of weeks for the paper, the documents. But, um, on the end of this week, I'll be going into the building department to see what I can find. And I was And I was just thinking that it would probably be a good idea to put, you know, some of this online for people to show interest in. But on the same token, I, you know, PSE and G noticed all the neighbors. You know, they, they, they did everything by law that they were supposed to do. And from my understanding, from just actually having a discussion with an attorney today, and with a cellphone tower companies wanting to put their equipment back up on the towers, it was just literally today brought to my attention, and I was going to ask Yolanda and Liz about this for clarification, that there are some new state regulations with regard to any previously granted resolutions from zoning boards with regard to height variances, that something to the effect of that there, so for instance, the existing towers, let's say, are 100 feet. The new towers are going to be 125 feet. So as a zoning officer, any mobile company, mobile carrier that's going to be putting their equipment back up, well, if they got a variance at 100 feet, I'm not going to let them put it back up at 125. However, I was just told today that there are some state regulations that say that they've branded kind of like a buffer because of this new monopole project. So I'm totally, you know, still researching what's allowed to do with each mobile application that comes our direction. Number one, number two, I know we did receive plans. I, again, I don't, unfortunately, I don't know where my predecessors, the zoning officer, put the plans. I haven't found them. So my next step is to go to construction and find the plans from there to see if we have them yet. That's the best I can say, but I do know that the neighbors were all notified accordingly, and that there's little to nothing that we can do about it. I believe Tom Delia even had correspondence with Jack Pigeon at one point a couple of years ago as to whether or not it should go to the zoning board, these new monopoles for the height variance. And I'm under the impression that all opinions were no because of the state regulations, and that the board really doesn't have any jurisdiction over PSE and G.
Again, for, for perspective on this project, the, the total cost of the project end to end has been published, and the feds have that number. And if you divide that by mileage and the number of poles and so on, you'll find that each one of the 25 poles in law, or towers in Long Hill that's being replaced, each one of those is a $2 million job. And so that's how I get the number that this is going to be a $50 million construction project throughout the town. And, and that's, that's sort of what triggered me because we don't see $50 million projects very often.
Because it doesn't have anything to do with the town.
But this is all very interesting, but can we move on? We're getting on, it's, it's almost nine o'clock.
I'm, I have.
As interesting as it is.
I have clocks in front of me, Brendan. I'm, I'm just allowing the board to discuss a matter that we should probably have a discussion about.
Well, if we can't, if we don't have any jurisdiction over it, and we have no ability to change anything, you know, it, it's maybe not a discussion around dur, during, during board time.
Has the, has the township committee got any input from PSE and G on the construction process, the disruption it might cause, et cetera?
Not to my knowledge, but they may very well have. It's just, I just haven't, I haven't been informed.
All right, moving on to the next discussion item. As you are all aware, our attorney has left us for greener pastures, and we will have to come up with a new attorney. I've talked with the zoning board chairman, and we have had some recommendations from board members and others. And we are at a point where we're ready to interview candidates. The problem is the clock is ticking, and we've got to get this done before Yolanda leaves in early September because a new attorney will have to come on board and pick up where she leaves off. The proposal, and I will talk more about this when we go into executive session, but the proposal is to hold interviews by joint board before the zoning board meeting next Tuesday, which would mean that the planning board members would, would convene an executive meeting joint with the zoning board for the purpose of interviews. And then the zoning board will continue with its regular meeting. This would be a special executive board session at 6:30 PM next Tuesday. I can talk more about this when we go into executive session, but for right now, what I need is a resolution to convene a special meeting next Tuesday to discuss contract matters.
Just a quick question, Dennis, how, in that short period of time, how would we, unless it, how would, how, how would we, uh, unless it, uh, applications from attorneys?
We'll just, we'll have to discuss that in executive session.
Okay.
If we do not have a meeting to interview candidates next Tuesday, then we will be without an attorney, and there won't be any opportunity for overlap, which is why time is of the essence on this. David?
We can talk about this, and we can talk about this in executive session, but what's the difference here? Can't Jack pick it up? I mean, we did Jessica as a temporary step before. Can't we get Jack as in a temporary step for a couple of months?
No, the municipal land use law does not allow the municipal attorney to represent the boards.
Is there somebody else they can use?
Well, that's, that's what we're going to talk about in executive session. But we need to go on record to notice a special meeting next Tuesday, and that's all I'm asking for right now, is it just?
Still moved?
I can.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any, any opposed?
So, so just, so just to clarify, we are then having a special meeting, joint session with the zoning board next Tuesday, which is the 17th at 6:30 PM.
Yes.
Via Zoom.
Right.
Zoom meeting.
Via Zoom webinar.
It's a Zoom, it is a Zoom meeting because that's the way the zoning board is going to handle next Tuesday.
Correct.
I, I won't be here up in Nashville, 6:30, probably enjoying music, just so you know.
And I, and I also will not be in attendance because I will be on vacation as well.
All right, you can take your computer with you and zoom in.
If anybody, if anybody's not going to be in attendance, if you would just kindly shoot me an email, thank you.
I will not be, Deborah.
Does there need to be a quorum on our part because?
Not for the executive session.
Okay, all right. Deborah, I'll let you know.
Thank you.
The next item on the agenda is the long-awaited discussion of sore points in the master plan. In June, everyone accepted an assignment to work on a, an open item. Couple of weeks ago, I polled asking who was ready, and I only got one response. And so by default, I will ask you to consider the Valley Road discussion package that I sent out yesterday morning. And the intent here is that if the board can come to a decision, not necessarily an agreement, but a decision on these talking points, then the writing of the land use settlement will proceed down that line, and we won't discuss this again until the public hearing. Do you all have the document that I sent? And I will suggest that we start at line four. And anybody who's got a comment on page one, make the comment. Incidentally, Don had asked for a template for what the master plan might look like. I don't know if what I have written is a template for what the master plan would look like, but it certainly is a template for the, these front-end discussions.
And so for full disclosure, I've not had a chance to read this, even though you sent it yesterday morning. Not enough time for me to get.
Sorry about that. I didn't hear from anybody else, and I was hoping that somebody else would be better prepared than I was.
Can you screen share so we can follow along with what you're looking at, Dennis?
Well, do you, did you get my email with the draft in it?
I did, but, yeah, I mean, is it going to be, it's going to be kind of hard to see what you're talking about or what you're referring to if we don't see what you're looking at.
Well, I'm looking at my draft, and it is line numbered. So if you can pull that out of your email.
I can share my screen if, if that helps.
Great. You're sending me searching.
Oh, there you go. Thank you, Tom.
Dennis, you can do this too with hitting the, uh, screen share button on the bottom.
Oh, don't push me beyond my limits.
Oh, I'll push you beyond the limits.
Now, what makes this look a little different from prior formats is that I have stated a goal and then proceeded from the goal to, and to action plans, one goal at a time. That way, it's possible to relate the action plan, action plans to the underlying goal in the, in the historic layout of the land use settlement. All the goals are expressed in one place, and all the recommendations in another place, and all the action plans in another place. It's hard to find out if there are orphans. So I have shuffled everything 90 degrees so that the goals and the action plans relate to each other. And thus, if you don't agree with a goal, then everything below it in terms of action plans also goes away. And if you look at some of the draft elements that are available to us, in some cases, we see action plans, and there are no goals supporting it, supporting them, which suggests that the editing was done in a way that left cliffhangers at the end. Action plans on the last page that weren't supported by anything that preceded. At any rate, page one, any questions or comments?
I guess Dennis said that, you know, the only, there's a sentence where is it? "The architectural style and visual look and feel of the area reflect decades of unplanned development resulting in an unattractive, unharmonious mix of newer buildings coexisting with older structures." I don't know if, I mean, I, I, I know you wrote it.
Oh, no, timeout. That specific sentence was lifted from prior master plans.
Oh, really? I mean, I just.
Just to tease you, but that sentence is, is copied. One of the few things in this document that is copied.
It sounds like something you had written. I can see why you left it in.
No, no, I, this, this, this is probably Tom Bear's editing of prior writing before him.
Yeah, I mean, I would take exception to that. I mean, I, I'm not taking exception, but I would rather not see it there. It, it's, it's subjective, and, 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 you know, really, it's, it's not that bad. And, and, you know, we have a, we have a, we have a town that we're quite proud of, and that particular sentence, I think, is uncalled for, in my opinion.
Other comments?
I just had one thing. In the opening sentence, you say it's from west of Main Avenue to Morristown Road. Isn't it east of Main Avenue?
No, west of Main Avenue. It starts three lots east of, or west of Main Avenue.
Oh, oh, I see. Okay, got it. Okay.
On the north side.
Yeah, I got you. Okay.
And it actually doesn't continue to Morristown Road. It actually ends short of the first aid squad. Yes, David?
Yeah, I, I, thanks for getting this going, but, and I'm just going to make note of, maybe I'll forward out some of the work we did before, talking about downtown Valley and incorporating in some of the surveys as well, where there was a high percentage of people who do have concerns about the aesthetics of Valley Road. So maybe suggest incorporating some of those thoughts and comments into this document as well.
Possibly, but, but right now, I tried to condense the history to the elements of, of history that are relevant to the master plan.
Yeah, and that's what.
And Dennis, I think you did a very good job of doing that.
Yeah. But I'll just provide it just as reference, so you can take a look and see if you want to incorporate some of that additional information.
Oh, okay. Goal, if you want to propose specifics that fit into the history section, fine. And right now, I want to finish history before we go on to anything else.
Gotcha.
Any other versions of, all right, let's go to page two. And I have defined the goal here to ensure the continuation of an economically sustainable commercial center. Believe it or not, I can state that goal in less than 10 words. Does anybody challenge that goal? Or anything else below it on the page?
Line 49 kind of calls out your, Mike's music shop to takeout restaurant. Just want to call that out.
At line 49, I don't see anything about takeout.
It says the restaurants, so it's a takeout restaurant.
No.
Yes.
At line 49 of your document, of the document you have on the screen?
Restaurants. Economically viable options, that restaurants serve professional offices, and retail will have to be encouraged to maintain fill. So you're taking, Mr. Rock would maintain fill.
That, that is a follow-on to the first sentence, which says, if we have vacant buildings because brick and mortar is gone, then what's left?
I got that.
Okay.
So Dennis, what do you mean by they must be replaced at line 48? If they're vacant, like, like, what you, are you suggesting that we require something vacant to be, to be, or, or the, 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 the building be replaced, or?
No, no, I didn't, don't mean to imply anything about buildings. I'm just saying the, the, the tenancy, or the fill, or the, the economically viable commercial enterprise has to be replaced. You can't, you can't have a building exist full of vacancies.
Right, so I could make that, if you could, you could make that a little bit clearer because I look at it, the sentence that precedes it, and it seems like it was the, you know, you're talking about structures. If you could make that a little bit clearer, that would be, I think that might be.
I would be, I would be happy to have you propose alternate language. Send it to me.
I'll send it to you.
But is there any disagreement about the fact that very few structures in the zone can be repurposed?
I'm not sure about the, I'm not sure about that. The most important could be repurposed somehow.
I think you have, you have a mixture through that area of buildings that can't.
Yeah, I think it's too.
Yeah, we've already decided that Mike, we've already decided that Mike's music can be repurposed.
Yeah, other than mics. Yeah, other than mics.
Thermoplastics.
I, I think you're stretching it. I think you're stretching it, but that's a redevelopment zone anyhow, so.
But for example, the mall can't be repurposed as housing, for example.
It could, it just needs a little modification.
It could be professional offices in there, like a med merge or.
I mean, I mean, in some of those.
You'll know, you'll notice I added energy efficiency, recognizing that the mall is now 50 years old. It can't be an energy efficient use. And yeah, it could become professional offices. In fact, it's interesting that the mall is filling up with professional uses. There's the, a music school in there, there's a dance studio in there. Those are the uses that are coming in to replace the missing retail.
And I wish the point anyhow, this, this sentence, repurpose anyhow. I mean, what are you trying to say here?
What I'm trying to say is that, what I'm trying to say is we can't rely on retail to fill up Valley, Valley Road.
Oh, that's different, that's a different, that's a different story.
I think retail and professional would, would work.
Because, because you say repurposed due to age, right? That's nothing to do with use. That's just, that's physical. That's the building you're talking about here. Are you talking about use? Are you talking about that's your physical end thing? If you wanna change use, yeah, and be flexible for use, that's a different story. And we do need to talk about uses.
I see your point. What, what I'm really talking about here is the evolution away from retail, brick and mortar shopping.
That's, 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 but that's an override, that's an overriding introduktional comment. Is that's the vision for the future, I expect taste, prospect expectation for the future. We need to try and get in front of that.
I think we should get away from making negative statements and just seeking alternative uses for those buildings.
Yeah, I mean, Dennis, if you took out that first sentence and just had the second one, I think you've, you've basically said everything you wanted to say.
It, right, start with if they are vacant, then it must be replaced with energy efficient or purpose built design. Boom, done.
Okay, that's a good comment. Thank you, Brendan. Alright. Now. The opportunity we have here is at line 52, we're seeing that in the redevelopment situation that we talked about earlier tonight. A developer has found an economic reason them to acquire the car wash lot, but not to build the currently permitted use.
So that's what we need to think about the uses, right? And I think you did mention it somewhere.
Keep reading, keep reading down to recommendations, which is the next step.
Right, right. But it's not just residential, but what other types of uses that we want to encourage.
Line 63.
Yeah, Dennis, I have a little bit of.
Yeah, but that's all residential, other than residential, at some point.
Uh, Tom Malinos, go ahead.
The way route, uh, line 63, you know, starts off, you're looking for something to make it a vibrant downtown shopping area where people can walk to, and then you're listing multifamily housing. Okay, that's understandable.
No, I haven't, no. Stop, stop. This goal is only an economically viable commercial center. It doesn't talk about walking.
That's the next goal. Non automotive, you say non automotive population of local shoppers. So who would that be?
What line is that? Oh yeah, line 60, I did say that.
Were you thinking of on, on their motorized scooters?
Yeah, because everybody else is like senior citizens, you know, nursing homes, assisted senior living, that, that's not a down, a vibrant downtown community. That people are gonna be walking around looking for restaurants and shopping. You know, they're gonna want senior buses to take them across the way to Valley Mall. I, I would think you would need like I said, the multifamily housing for putting young, younger people in, but everything else is is not what you want in the downtown area. In my opinion.
Yeah, I can, I can accept striking the last few words about non automotive from that recommendation.
Yeah, I'm a little more concerned about the type of, the type of housing you're, you know, you're
Well, we've been, we've been sneaking up to action plan, so let's go to action plan.
Okay.
Yeah, Dennis, I mean, multifamily housing, I, I don't know if it belongs, I don't know if there's enough room for multifamily housing plus all the other things that you want to have there for your, for your vibrant.
Well, there would have been, if, there would have been if the redevelopment zone at thermoplastics could get past the DEP, there would have been multifamily housing. There's a multifamily housing application in progress on Plainfield Road at the zoning board.
But is that part of this?
Yes. Uh, Plainfield Road is part of the zone.
Alright, so, and you know, the other one, yeah, but it was, it was sequestered kind of at one end. And with Sterling, I mean, the way that I see it here, it could be interspersed throughout that whole area. And, you know, given, given the types of uses that are there right now and will probably survive, it just seems to me that I, I know it actually attract people, it, you know, allowing more multifamily housing, I think goes, goes against what you want to, what you want to achieve here, I think.
At the same time, just as devil's advocate, this is just one, this should just be one avenue. This should be one, you know, you know, arrow in the in, in the river, right? So, but we should be talking more about other things as well. Yeah, residential maybe makes a lot of sense, but do we, not let's focus on that.
As, as you guys may, as you guys may recall, starting in 2007 with the 2020 Vision event, for 14 years, we have been flip flopping back and forth on residential on Valley Road. 2020 Vision, the, the majority of that exercise recommended it. It came before the township committee and was turned off. Then it was turned on, then it was turned off, then it was compromised by saying, well, not on the first floor, but we'll allow it overhead. And so for 14 years, we've been flipping back and forth on the question of residential on Valley Road. And now I'm looking for another calibration based on the fact that shopping, brick and mortar shopping seems to be going away. So we should reevaluate how we keep Valley Mall busy. And the only thing we don't allow in Valley Mall right, or on Valley Road right now is residential. So again, this is a recalibration. Do we include residential in the next master plan or not?
I think recalibration is fine. I don't think it's the only thing to talk about here. And we're gonna be, you know, whatever happens with redevelopment on the car wash is gonna head in that direction anyhow, so.
Well, at this, at this point, when they, we're, if, if the redevelopment of the car wash goes ahead with an assisted living facility, then we're going to need a new ordinance, which means an overlay. The question is, does, does that become a new generality for any place in downtown? Or is the assisted living going to be specific to that site? Just as multifamily housing was at one time, in fact, still is specific to the thermoplastics site, because that ordinance was placed and it hasn't been withdrawn.
Yeah, but, but Dennis, we're not gonna, I mean, we can, we, we, we know that there's not, not gonna be anything down there as, as far as residential's, can, can multifamily residential. You know, we may very well have a couple of assisted living facilities there, that's fine. You know, but, but I would, I, if you, if you add multifamily housing, you know, along that zone, then what if you get more residential housing and less any, you know, less commercial activity? And so really, you have your, your, you know, it undercuts the goal of being economically sustainable commercial center. I, you know, I, I just don't think there's any need for multifamily housing in here other than what we've kind of talked about before, which was, you know, we could, we could, we could certainly think about it on top of, you know, commercial structures. But to, 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 to go back to multifamily housing in this zone, I think you're, I think you're opening up something quite dangerous.
Well, I wanted to open it up. It's a judgment call for the other members as to whether or not it's dangerous. So let's, let's hear from others. Is there, if there is a different way to maintain the economic survivability of the downtown zone, I'd be glad to hear it. But you can't force people to build barber shops or toy shops. Speaking of which, the toy shop closed and a barber shop is about to close.
Yeah, but I mean, I mean, I could just say one more thing, right? And before, before is kind of, you know, the economics will, will, will dictate what, what happens. I mean, already, you know, as, as retail's closing, we're seeing more service oriented businesses move in. And that may very well be the, you know, what we, what, what becomes your economy, you know, they underpin your economically sustainable commercial center. But to put, to put, you, you know, to be able to put multifamily housing in there, you may very well see mostly multifamily housing and, and not very much else.
Well, you talk, you talk about economically viable, and I agree with you. But probably today, the most economically viable project for a developer is multifamily housing. They all seem to wanna do that rather than build more stores or office buildings.
But that's what I'm saying. And so if you, if you allow it in this zone, that's all that you may very well get, a whole, a whole section of, of of multifamily housing. And, and that's not what we're intending, I think, by having this zone.
Alright, I, I, I accept that. That's a valid opinion. Uh, any other comments on Brendan's position? Hello? The, and the reason I'm asking is because the planning board is ultimately gonna have to adopt the land use element of the master plan, and we should all know what's going into it. We should all know how this sausage is being made. And right now, it, it seems like Brendan is the worst master here.
No, I, I think there has to be sort of, with all this stuff, a balance between the two, right? So whether Valley Road, the Valley Mall becomes an opportunity, but to your point earlier, Dennis, you said, is it, is it somewhere that should be localized? So maybe we should consider what's, what we can do around localization or some of, something like this. So it doesn't become a, oh, let's knock down the Sterling diner and put up more, you know, whatever residential housing. I think it's, in, in, and that's the trick, and that's the trick, is trying to find, if not a balance, trying to find the best opportunities to direct.
I'd like Liz, I'd like Liz to opine about localization. Turn your mic on.
Yeah, no, I, I actually would agree that I, I think that you may want to have some sort of requirement that if there is retail or is residential, particularly multifamily residential, that they have some sort of ground floor, non residential use, so that you don't have a series. You, you wanna avoid obviously having a series of apartment buildings, uh, that are just apartment buildings on Valley Road. I'm not sure that would happen, but you, you wanna avoid that potential.
Tom?
I see the challenge right now of trying to fill recall businesses and many of these vacants retail shops and I could see a need for removing the requirement of having ground floor retail. And maybe if we're putting multifamily dwellings in there, it's more townhouse like, something that's, you know, got the curb appeal, not something that looks like rectangular boxes that are apartment boxes. I just see ways, I mean, I like the work that's being done up the street on Valley over in the Gillette business district area. That's got all the side work that's going on, but there's your classic retail below and apartments on top. Thankfully, all of that is, appears to be taken. But when you look at the Valley Mall, you've got that big anchor store vacant, Kings is gone. There's a couple others that are gone, the pet store is gone, the work, the KO shop is gone. If you continue down Valley Road, you've got the ice or thermoplastics, that's gotta be addressed somehow. Uh, and you've got several other buildings that are vacant. Uh, and they seem to be mostly on the north side of the building, uh, north side of Valley Road, uh, that are, are, are vacant or even derelict looking. So I would, I would, I would, I would strongly consider either removing that requirement or relaxing that requirement of putting ground floor retail. Because if we're saying that more e-commerce is going to take away the traditional brick and mortar, then what is coming into those buildings? What is, what is the businesses that are, and I don't have that data, but maybe there is somewhere we can get that data to see what is being, what businesses are attracted to the traditional brick and mortar. Are they music shops? Are they, such as the dance? Is there something else, an art shop? I don't know. What's coming into those buildings? That's now, that can't be solved through e-commerce.
Look at the clothing shop next to the diner, which closed down after about four years and is now a law office. That's what's gonna happen until we run out of.
That's a professional, right? So, so looking at that data, we could see what else, it's not just, who else is looking for brick and mortar?
What, what I'm seeing in other towns, you're, you're correct, Tom, that in other towns where they do require retail space be built, it does get built and it doesn't always get tenanted. So it's sort of, you know, like what was the purpose of, of forcing people to build ground floor retail? But two things that I have seen coming up most recently, one is what people call experiential retail. And it's sort of something where you would go to a location for an experience that you wouldn't be able to have, you know, you can't order online, so to speak.
Wine, right?
Right, you know, wine and yogurt or whatever. Do that in Hoboken, but, um, anyway, things like that. The other thing that people are starting to see, or I, I've heard people tell me is you know, a lot of people don't really wanna go back to the office, um, but they don't necessarily wanna be at home. All the way into, you know, New York City or wherever, they will, people are looking for smaller office. And not necessarily like a week work, maybe in some cases, yes. Also just, you know, they want some space they can go to get out of the house, but not be too far away from home.
Right.
I mean, those are two things that I've been seeing, but you know, I'm sure Yolanda probably has some.
I imagine that's along the line of the experience, right? The professional experience, professional office experience without having to do the full hour and a half commute into.
Yeah, there's a name for that business. My brother used to rent an office and he rarely went there, but when he needed a conference room, there was a conference room. And there was always a receptionist to answer his phone as well as a dozen other professionals who maintained an address there for mail and for telephone, but rarely showed up there. And Liz, what is the name of that business?
Virtual office space.
That, that may be what it's called. Quite honestly, our company used to have one as well in Red Bank, and I'm not sure what the official. in Red Bank, um, and I'm not sure what the official name is, to be honest. But, um, but, but I even, that is something that's more of like a shared office space type scenario. Whereas, um, I'm talking about people just saying, I want to, I want a room somewhere that I can, you know, set up at my office.
Deborah, are you still with us? Deborah?
Yep, yep, I'm here.
Um, I had the great opportunity a couple of days ago to go to your neighborhood in Livingston.
Uh huh.
And I visited, uh, extremely densely packed mixed use development. Uh, Livingston, something or other, something or other, where everything was crowded together. There were a lot of little shops and a lot of residences over them and not enough parking. You know what I'm talking about?
Town center, yes.
Yeah, yeah, town center.
On the corner of, um, Mount Pleasant and, or Route 10 and Livingston Avenue, yes.
Can you tell us a little bit about how that's working? Is it full?
It's full, right, well, actually, so it's interesting, you said, because initially the planning board of Livingston said, no chains. They wanted all little shops, but the rent was through the roof. From my understanding, Starbucks had looked there, they said, no, they, no, they didn't want, so they went across the street. Um, eventually they had a hard time keeping tenants. And then they allowed seven eleven to come into the town center, which has since left. Um, the residences are not full, for sure, there's always the, on the market, there's, um, I, I could tell you as a resident and as I, I know the people talk about in town, that the way that they laid out the parking with the parking and there's a parking garage, it's, the flow is not, I mean, in my own opinion as a resident, it's, it's, can be problematic. Let's just put it that way.
Now, we're not allowed to talk about aesthetics, but it is a very pretty development.
It's nice, it looks nice, sure.
You get to see a lot of it while you're driving around looking for a parking place.
That's what I mean. And you could, well, on another side, there's plenty of parking, they can park it, people can park in the parking deck. But like me, I'm lazy and I want, you know, I want a spot right by the shop that I'm going to.
Right.
Can I just do a couple of quick questions, because I know time's pushing on, but, um, my first one is, I guess, I don't want to get, we shouldn't get bogged down with first floor versus, because I think first floor, fine, it, when it's facing Valley Road. If you remember a few years back, car wash, old car wash, somebody came in with a nice decent application. Buildings in front, apartments above, then all apartments behind, so let's not, it's, it's three dimensional. I, I, I get a sense we're getting a bit two dimensional on some of this. And my other comment just quickly is, how do you keep people to stay and encourage people to hang, to stop? I keep thinking of the folks that hangs outside Dunkin' Donuts and I feel bad for them because they've got to sit in the car park. They don't have anywhere to sort, go grab their cup of coffee and have a little park area and, and what have you, so. So, you know, I think we've just got to be a bit more expansive on what economic viability means and how, how, what uses, what landscape is, is good to keep people and, and encourage people to come into the area. And yeah, if residential, maybe it's, think about, you know, not always just on what's facing Valley Road, but what's behind it. Because a lot of it, sitting on the north side is space.
Well, that's why I said in the last line, uh, relaxed coverage, tree placement and height requirements. It may very well be that once you get behind the front facade, you allow more height.
That's all fine, but it needs to be a little bit, you know, that's, that's fine, sorry, go ahead, sorry.
I'm willing to remove, at line fifty-nine, I'm willing to remove multifamily. Uh, but leave the rest of the residential uses, like group homes, nursing homes, congregates, senior and assisted living, because admittedly, those people don't get out without a wheelchair, but on the other hand, we gotta, we gotta put those things somewhere in town and do we want them on Valley Road or do we want them in residential neighborhoods?
I don't think it's a case of forcing perhaps, just because you don't like it elsewhere, it's like having. But again, I, I would just maybe focus on what's on, what's facing the street, what's behind, goes behind it and not, not allow, allow for both is my point. And maybe in certain spots as well.
Mr. Chairman, can I just make one quick comment?
Yeah, please.
Um, the interesting trend with the market right now, I mean, and I, I see this residential getting overbuilt, by the way. Uh, that, that market's going to come to a screeching halt right now in a lot of towns. Um, the, the big market right now, and I think this is sustainable into the future, is thinking about um, more attractive industrial flex space. Uh, there are a tremendous number of contractors that we have in our region and in our town, and they are really hungry for the eight thousand to five thousand square foot space that's warehouse, back, office, frontage. And I worry that again, we're not offering enough flexibility for that type of development along our commercial district. It can be done attractively, doesn't need to be looking at a blank wall of a warehouse. Uh, it can be done to, I think, still maintain what we're trying to do with the street skate. But I think we need to be open to that because that market seems to be here and into the future. Uh, as well as the last mile logistics that we're tracking very carefully, which is all of the packaging and the delivery services where places are going to be needed for storage of these things. Because brick and mortar, mortar is suffering, doesn't mean that the online isn't flourishing. Uh, but there's, we're, we're simply, we just can't operate out of the, you know, million square foot warehouses. We need to break that down and bring it to smaller areas. That's why even a lot of the old postal, uh, infrastructure, post office infrastructure is getting looked at to be redeveloped for that type of purpose. So I just worry that this is too narrowly focused and not allowing the market to private.
Now, with, with regard to this contractor condominium situation, and I've seen these in other places. Can they charge enough rent for that kind of space to justify the investment in land that it takes to put that on Valley Road as opposed to say, at the end of Railroad Avenue, Sterling?
You know, Dennis, we've, we've already had proposals for exactly that kind of, uh, uh, situation on Valley Road. And so, uh, what, what, what Dawn says, you know, is, 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 uh, very much, um, on the cards, I think, for Valley Road, because we've, we've, we've actually seen it.
Is there any prohibition in the current ordinance against those uses? Well, we do, we do prohibit self-storage. And this is an, this is a variation on self-storage. It is a store, essentially a storage facility with probably truck parking and minimal office.
No, I mean, I think what we're looking at, you know, potentially, and certainly in one form of it is, you know, say somebody has a, uh, you know, makes kitchen cabinets or whatever, they make kitchen cabinets, they store things in the back and they have a, they have a, they have a front, uh, uh, store.
Right, showroom, right, something like that.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's fine.
You know, the artisans are coming back, guys.
Yeah, that's an artisan, live work situation.
Yeah, this is.
Those are permitted.
Try to embrace because we have a lot of that in town. I mean, this, this town is blessed with a lot of people who actually make things and, and use their hands and do things than just the professionals.
Yeah, and, uh, most of them don't survive very long, I'm sorry to say.
One thing along those lines I've also seen is people looking to permit microbreweries and things like that. Uh, artisanal wine where you do have some sort of, um, you know, manufacturing onsite, but there's also a retail component. It's all very heavily kind of regulated by the state, but there is, uh, you know, people, it's both, it's a little bit of, um, industrial manufacturing.
What we're saying is, is bring industrial, light industrial uses back to Valley Road.
And, but you know, something like a microbrewery ha- uh, has a public section, you know, so you're drawing people in, even if that's not their sole purpose for, for visiting.
Liz, what, what are you finding that microbreweries are usually classified, like, most ordinance don't, don't have anything for a microbrewery? Or do they go in as a restaurant?
No, they're, they're actually, they're classified, they're licensed quite differently. And so I'm, I'm finding that actually ordinance is, I know Morris Town just did this and Morris Plains is doing this, is amending their ordinances to permit microbreweries.
Cause we, cause we've actually, you know, we've actually had a lot of inquiries about putting microbreweries in Long Hill.
That the, the microbrewery is like the one in Berkeley Heights, they can't serve food and that's what is.
Right.
Problem, they can't be or look like a restaurant.
Right, they're, or like the one in New Providence.
Right.
Yeah, no, they can't, they, but they can, you can have food delivered.
Or people can bring it in, right?
Right.
Why couldn't we, why couldn't we have a microbrewery also double down as a restaurant?
Well, that's as far as our ordinance, that's a very good question, that's one of the things that.
I think that would be.
Honestly, I'll be asking Liz and Yolanda soon too, is.
I think, and again, I'm not an expert, I think it's something though, state driven, uh, Tom.
I would think.
Separation.
Well, well, as far as the regulation, but as far as our zoning ordinance, we don't have it prohibited, so therefore is it allowed?
Assuming they can get a license.
Oh, exactly, with the state regulations, absolutely.
Yeah, Ms. Dell, she had her hand up.
I als- I also think we, not that this is something that we can, I, I think we should also be encouraging like more food and beverage establishments. Obviously, those also have like a high failing, failing rate, but one, eating out is becoming more and more popular, I'm sure everyone can tell. Two, like, I don't know how this all, this all works, some of you may know better than I, but like with our inevitably growing population with, um, the Millington complex and depending on what happens with Elite, like, I'm sure people are gonna apply or the town is going to have to somehow evaluate its, um, liquor license number. I don't know if Dennis, you know anything about that, like, I just think that that's also something that should be evaluated because, um, eating out, people are like really into eating out, food and beverage, hospitality, you know, farm to table, whatever it is, like.
Go ahead. I thought you were done.
Yeah, no, and so I just think that that's also like, as much as, uh, brick and mortar is going down, food and beverage is not. So that's something that I think we should be encouraging, maybe on these first floors or whatever, but I, 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 so that's separate from the microbrewery thing, um, but along the same lines, I think there should be a discussion about that, not necessarily today.
According to the liquor license laws, we're permitted three liquor licenses in town. It turns out we have seven because they existed before the new formula. But, uh, we're already over the number of liquor licenses, so we're not going to get new liquor licenses granted in this town until the state law is changed.
Well, I don't, I don't, I don't actually think microbreweries, uh.
Yeah, that doesn't, no, no.
Nothing to do with the.
Saying it's separate.
Teresa was talking about restaurant liquor license.
I know, but Dennis, do you know if like those, the four surplus ones were grandfathered in before, when I was like nineteen, whatever? But like, so does that mean every three thousand, like, I know it's three, per three thousand people, like, one of those ones that was grandfathered in is like considered, I, I'm just trying to.
It is my understanding that we could not get another liquor license until our population tripled.
And make up for those ones that were grandfathered in.
Well, the ones that are grandfathered in still count, but they're not withdrawn or, or taken away. We can still use them and we do, but, uh, you know, and right now, uh, Myersville Inn has been closed for over two years, they have a liquor license, it's sitting there, but apparently the owner can't uh, economically justify reopening.
Well, there's, I think there's another one also, but yeah, but, and Myersville, it, that, that location to me isn't a great location for, I think that would be better suited on Valley Road, you know what I mean, like? Um, so if you're talking about adding any multifamily, I think instead of thinking about what kind of shop someone's going to go to, I think, I don't know, I'm just kind of thinking there's like a millennial right now, like, if, if I, I want to think about, can I walk to go grab something to eat or like have a quick drink or, you know what I'm saying? So I think that that's a little more viable in twenty twenty-one.
Well, there's a, there's a serious issue about restaurants. Uh, a few years ago, I did a study, the two most densely restauranted major cities in the United States are San Francisco and Washington DC in the basis of restaurants per population. And it turns out that in Long Hill, our number is right up there with San Francisco and DC. Uh, because we have so many restaurants actually, uh, per population. Now, that, that's a little bit skewed now because Myersville Inn is closed. Uh, but if you count them up and do the math, we've already got, uh, as many restaurants as, uh, the big cities.
Yeah, but like, are you counting Panera, it is like Panera get counted towards that and the diner and Starbucks, like what gets counted towards that?
They, that, there, those are counted in the statistics for San Francisco and DC, so I count them in our statistics. Now, you may not like to, uh, eat, uh, dinner at, uh, uh, Starbucks, for example. Uh, but Panera isn't bad and, uh, and some people go to Dunkin' Donuts for breakfast, my God, how unhealthy is that?
No, I, I, I know, but I'm just talking about like realistically what people are looking for as they're like, who's going to be moving into all these apartments that are coming into Long Hill? Yeah, it's either people that I can't think of or it's people coming from the city. And if they're coming from the city, they're going to launch certain similarities to where they were already living. Um, I don't disagree with you at all, and that's why I said, I understand there's like a high failure rate. And I'm not necessarily saying like it'll def, but, but I think that that's something that's, you know, consistently what people look for versus retail in a non-food and beverage sense.
Uh, Deborah, back to, uh, Livingston Town Square. How are they fixed for public transportation?
Um, I think we only have a bus that gets, gets you to, um, either Harrison, I think it's Harrison or Newark. Right, hold on, you, I could, I could ask, I could ask my, um, better half, because he, he's commuted on the bus, but I think it's only a bus line that takes you.
Is there a train station anywhere near Livingston?
We do not have a train station in Livingston.
Well, I know you don't have one there, but is there one closer than, uh, uh, say Orange?
Milburn.
Dover, wow.
Mil- Milburn's, uh.
Milburn, yeah.
And most, most people, most people from Livingston, um, they go into the city, uh, go to Harrison and take the path from Harrison.
Uh, I, I ask that only because Valley Road is also not a, uh, except for six buses a day that run the Port Authority, there's not much public transportation available on Valley Road. But David, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I just, um, time's pushing along and I don't want to be a sort of a.
Okay, let's move on to, quickly to goal number two.
Can we go to executive session and I think we've got enough here just to fool this tomorrow.
We don't need more than about fifteen minutes in executive session.
You sure?
Yeah. So let's, let's carry on for about another twenty minutes with this, I, unless you want to pick this up again at another meeting. This discussion is very valuable.
But I think it's, it's, it's good, I think it's, I think, yeah, we said again, I have twenty minute debate in there. It's just that, um, it'd be nice now for us to go away and, and think a little bit further and harder on some of this stuff, so you're setting the scene, so that's good.
Well, anybody who wants to take a piece of this and rewrite it, uh, is certainly welcome to because sooner or later, we're going to have to have, uh, a target for Valley Road that can go into the new land use element. And we've been avoiding these discussions for a very long time.
And I may just shoot back and note maybe just to you, Dennis, some of the points from our previous work as well. You see how that can dovetail into what you're putting together here.
Encourage, goal number two, encourage walkability and pedestrian slash bicycle friendly access. Is that really a goal for Valley Road? slash bicycle friendly access. Is that really a goal for Valley Road?
It's a tricky one. It's difficult for bicycles because it's a dangerous, it's a narrow road, very rose. How you can make it safer without now in the road? It's, that's, that is a tricky situation, right?
And none of the trail network goes to Valley Road, except at Town Hall.
Right. So I mean, a big thing's gonna be whatever happens to the park opposite, right? And then how you encourage trans, communicate, walking links between the sections of town. Don't necessarily, you know, go go along, Valley Road should not be the center of that, that discussion. There should be a network around it. Doesn't mean to say the north side maybe should have some more walkways in general. I mean, some, some, you know, you come to one property and it's, there's this nice sidewalk and you go to the next, it disappears. So there's no consistency in some cases, so.
I, I did a little mental imaging of when would you walk across Valley Road? And what exists on opposite sides of Valley Road that would make a a, a, a walking situation, something like you're at the diner and you walk across the street to the medical office. Or you're at the hair salon next to ShopRite and you walk across the street to Centander Bank. Those are pretty obscure.
Yeah. You know, we've been taught before in Sterling Diner, making that more of a dense location. So just sort of picking up on some of that prior of old ordinance work as well. Your point, where, where is the walkability? Is it, is it south side focused probably with some access here and there to north side? Sure. And the thing is, the, the park is on the north side. So you've got, and most of the residential is to the north side of it.
Yes. But just within the downtown area, are there, are there potential walkability targets that we ought to encourage?
I think there is.
When was the, what was the last pair of buildings that you walked between on Valley Road?
Are you, are you asking me that, Dennis?
Are you the one that spoke up? Yes.
Yeah, well, in other words, I think that we should encourage walkability definitely by having continuous sidewalks on the, on, on the one side of the street where the where we're planning on building that, planning on building a park.
Okay, I'm not, I'm not arguing against sidewalks. The question is, is, is walkability really a goal for Valley Road or is it icing on a nonexistent cake?
I think if we ever want to have anything existing that's vibrant and, 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 and you know, and really utilized by the community. You know, retail wise, different types of retail restaurants, microbreweries and all the different things that we discussed. I think that, you know, the proper sidewalks and crossing areas are, are necessary eventually. Or we're always gonna have that mishmash of, of businesses there. Just my thought.
Yeah. As, as things are situated, Dennis, you're right. It's not conducive to walking from one place to another. Although I have risked my life going from the liquor store to ShopRite parking lot. But any consideration of development should take into account making it more walkable. Just like Vic said, said to get, get people from out of their cars and let, let them walk from one place to another. It should be something considered.
You know, Dennis, isn't that something that economics is going to, I mean, economics is going to dictate it in the way that it's developed. You know, right now it's a county road. Is, do we really have that much that we can do there? But if we look at it and, and you know, we, 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 we keep it open with a general statement that that's something that would be good, but you know, ultimately it's just going to be the economics of the development that, that, that we can attract there.
Well, there's no question about that, but we can't put economics into the master plan because the property values are what they are. And people, if, if people are not willing to pay the asking price, then there won't be development. And we see example after example of that in Valley Road today. People are not, developers are not willing to pay the asking price. Which is why ninety percent of the buildings on Valley Road are more than thirty years old.
Yeah, but you know, I, I do believe we're, 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 over the next, you know, five to ten years, we're gonna see extreme changes in, in Valley Road. It's not driven by the master plan or anything else. I mean, we're, we're going to see development down on the thermal plastics. That is, that, that end is definitely going to change. And as you move up, the car wash is going to change. Opposite Walgreens is going to change. And so, you know, these are, these are changes that will drive additional changes. And so I, I think all you can really do for that is to, is to, you know, put general language and, and, and encourage all, all, all of these things, but ultimately the development there is going to drive all, drive all of these things, no matter what we debate right now and, 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 and put in a master plan.
Well, the question is, what is our plan? Is our plan to wait for applications that come in by developers who have a, an understanding of economics? Or are we going to arrange our ordinances in order to encourage certain things? That's the purpose of the master plan.
Right. But I mean, I think, but with what we have at the moment, we're already, we're already seeing those, those, those changes occur. I mean, I, I don't know what you would necessarily change to, 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 to make it more conducive. But, but right, you know, right now, with what we've been doing over the last couple of years, it's beginning to come to fruition. And we're, and we will see changes over, you know, as I say, in the next five to ten years, along, along Valley Road. Just
Point that I'm making is, the point that I'm making Brendan is that in the twenty odd years since the last master plan, which encouraged walkability, there hasn't been any piece of development on Valley Road that boards have seen and approved that encourages walkability. There hasn't been any street amenities. Nobody's put in a bench by the sidewalk in order to get a little more lot coverage and trade. We, we are very insistent about getting enough parking spaces. That we have not responded as a, as a, an ordinance or as the boards. We have not responded to the mandate of the nineteen ninety-seven master plan to go after walkability. And so my question is, is that still a reasonable goal?
Personally, I don't think, I don't think it's a, you know, we need to, if you say it's a reasonable goal, we're going to debate it, you know, I, I'd nauseam. Then, then it's probably not a reasonable goal because no matter what we do and what we say. Ultimately, you know, as I say, it's going to be, economics is gonna, is, is, is gonna transform it and make it whatever is going to make it walkable or not.
Well, economics, economics won't do it if we have an ordinance that prohibits it. And it, you, you can see that in the case of the proposal for the car wash lot. The ordinance doesn't prohibit it. So economically, he's got to go through, jump through a lot of hoops in order to do it. And it may not be economically viable, which is why he's asking for redevelopment determination. And, and it's a crapshoot on the developer's part. And an ordinance could make that a little more certain if the master plan directs that that's really one of our goals.
But I, I, I don't understand where you're going. I mean, you were talking about walkability. Now you're talking about the car wash property and
No, I'm just, I'm talking about economics. You're, you're relying on economics and I'm saying economics is constrained by what the ordinance allows and doesn't allow.
What happens is developers come in, there's a tract of land, the, the, if he, if he wants something. If, if they want to do something that fits within the ordinance, great. If not, they come in, they talk about it, it's debated and, and, and we, and we determine if changes need to be made. That's it.
What's our goal? What do we want to approve or not approve?
To Dennis's point, I mean, how do we encourage people to, walkability is not just a mere fact of walking, right? It's as you said, the benches, is it the place those guys at Dunkin' Donuts that sit around is, at the end of the day, there's also you know, about public spending. So should the township be? You know, we talk about pub, pocket parks. Now, how, how do you, I know we've got the big park at the end. Little park at this other end, right? Potentially. Pocket parks and stuff, but how, it's not just walkability. It's nice to walk to a shop, but it's, it's also nice to walk to a shop and sit down and listen to something going on or, you know, this public square type thing. So it's a bigger conversation than just walkability. It's not just crossing the street.
I know, but the thing is
Point. It's a concentration set for a purpose.
Right.
And even people, amenities to, to enjoy that and sit down, especially now, especially in this day and age. You can see that with people wanting to sit outside more, eat outside more.
Right. I mean, the thing, but the thing is, you know, we're, you know, we have a five page document here. And which I, which I thought was, you know, very well done. And we're going down a rabbit hole again, and this is why we, you know, if we, if we keep this up, we'll, we'll never get this. We'll, we'll never get this master plan done. We, 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 we keep going down these rabbit holes and, and they, they just never end. And, 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 and so we need to find some way of, of you know, being, being open enough in the, in the master plan to to, to get what we want, but general enough at the same time, so that we're, so, so that we're not having these, these discussions that have been going on for, for years.
I would, I would certainly agree. And that's why we're, that's why we're trying to resolve these issues one at a time. That's why I picked the five hotspots that we will talk about over the next few weeks and months. But on the other hand, we need a plan. And if the plan is, let the economists and the MBAs decide what goes into Valley Mall or into Valley Road. Okay, that could be a plan.
Yeah. Can I just put one word in for, a couple of words in for support of that? And here's why. I think we should dedicate much more focus to some of the village hamlets. In regards to some of the different aspects that we're creating, the walkability of Millington, of Sterling, which has tremendous potential. And even, and even portions of, of the Gillette hamlet that's beginning to kind of form. Instead of focusing on Valley, I think Valley is, I'm not saying to not focus, I'm saying to let the market you know, work to dictate where this goes. I, I, I would support what Brendan's saying because that's how it's gonna happen. I think we have very little control over that stretch. And I think we're gonna be banging our heads against the wall trying to, you know, put a square peg in a round hole. I hate to say. So that's my two cents. I think we should
So, so your, your vote would be, and I, and I say this with all due respect, your vote would be our plan is to let it happen.
Well, to let it happen with when, what, providing maximum flexibility for these different market forces to take hold. So that would be the plan.
Is, is walkability versus non-walkability one of the options that you'd leave to the developer?
I, I, I wouldn't stress walkability on Valley.
You would not stress walkability? That would not be a goal of yours?
Right.
All right, let's, how many think walkability should be a goal on Valley? Along with the action plans that lead to it? One, two.
Not walkability. It's about access to public space. It's about going out and being able to sit and enjoy some open, you know, enjoy the environment. Those guys at Dunkin' Donuts are standing by their cars because they can't sit down anywhere. So it's not a big, this is not a big thing. Doesn't have to be, it's just encouraging other, our public amenities to be created. So if you are walking, you have something you can stop, you can, you know.
If you look at all the development on Valley Road that has taken place in the last twenty years and that has come before the board. One board or the other in the past twenty years, none of them has put in benches by the sidewalk.
Well, because you don't ask for it. That's the point.
There's nothing here that wasn't in the prior master plans.
But, but to counter that, the one in Gillette, they were only gonna put a sidewalk on one side of their driveway. And we asked them to put it also on the other side. So it's both on the west and the east. That should be a consideration that's taken on by the board. Looking at each application and if it's gonna create or add to the walkability, it should be considered and brought forward. There's gonna be some instances where there is no walkability. Just, just the way it's gonna be for some of, some of these projects. But for me, I think walkability should be I'm trying, I'm, I'm one of the most walkable people I think around. I walk. I love the walkability of this town in many areas. I'm just suggesting that that shouldn't, you, you're asking the question, should that be a focus for Valley? And I'm saying, I think that should not be. I think there's many other areas we could focus walkability in this town by taking advantage of paper streets and creating better connections off Valley, quite frankly. Let's get people off Valley in, in regards to that. That's just where I was.
Yeah, but at the same, but at the same time, you just got, all you've got to do is connect, is the circulation, is allowing people. It's, and to your point, it's not, it's not that, that's the be all and end all. It's just one component.
Right.
That's all. But it needs to be just talked about and it could be a few sentences, you're done, you move on.
Yeah, but
Way more complicated.
Maybe we get a few sentences because we're walking down that rabbit hole and it's, it's, it's already, right, it's, it's, it, you know, somebody's wanting to walk then it's public spaces and then it's like hanging out in front of Dunkin' Donuts.
To be honest. No, no, that's, that's, I disagree completely. I mean, how, how, you, you walk around anywhere in, 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 in Europe and whatever town, you walk around New York, I'm sure. You walk a few blocks, you can find somewhere to sit. How we don't get prison? We asked them to put a little outdoor space, public space by the, by the store, by the, 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 the front store, store building. That's all it is. It's not asking, it's just not asking a lot of people just to consider the residents and anybody else who happens to want to just take a stroll and buy a cup of coffee at where the Dunkin' Donuts and be able to sit down. It's an encouragement. That's all it is. And if you have to give a little bit of luck coverage to do that, then what's the big, I don't see the big deal.
Then why not propose some language, right? Because again, it's, it's, we've been talking about this for a long time. And it's been talked about for a long time before this and before that, before that. It, it, it will never get this, 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 this master plan done.
That's it.
You're absolutely correct. You're absolutely correct, Brendan, but the point is this, this board sooner or later is going to have to vote to adopt it. And so we need to have some understanding of what combination of goals will lead to adoption. Which means we gotta have something that at least five members of the board agree on every single point that's in there. And discussing it is a way to get there. If you know a better way to get there, tell me.
Discussion is one thing, but this is, I, I, I say, it's been discussed over and over and over again. And, and there's been no, you know, whenever you think there's been a decision, the decisions revisited and, and we get into the position where we are right now. That's, that's, that's my issue. And so, you know, if you want a, a, a vote, I would say I'm with, I'm with Dawn and, and we, and we, and we say no and we move on. Other members might differ, but you know, consensus wins the day.
We're gonna have to leave this discussion unfortunately in order to go into executive session. We still got a couple of goals to discuss. And I solicit your input. I beg you to read what I have written and mark it up and comment vigorously. Because we're gonna have to process this down into something that a majority can agree on. And although I know Brendan is short tempered about the discussions. They're inevitably the way we reach some sort of consensus. Or find out where the consensus lies. And the consensus for Valley Road might lie in very minimal statements. And, and if so, I don't mind. If, if, if our plan is to let the market control. Then let's just simply state that. But at any rate, I solicit your input. I wish you would get back to me with your comments on this entire document. I'm sorry for the short time. I'm sorry for the short time. And for those of you who volunteered to write other sections, understand that we've got to go through uh, Gillette and Main Avenue and Barrett and Myersville. We're going to have to go through this same discussion over and over again, unless you can propose something that is agreeable to all. And I encourage you to start writing if you haven't yet since the June request. Uh, we're going to have to find a way to get something that we can all agree to, or at least the majority of us can agree to. Otherwise, there won't, there simply won't be a master plan. At this point, uh, Deborah, if you'd like to turn off the recording, we can go into executive session.
Well, we need a motion and what, we need Yolanda to read the, the resolution to go into a motion to executive session. So we need a motion, second, and then all of you.
Still moved.
Well, wait, you haven't heard the resolution yet.
To move to exec.
And Yolanda will spend at least 15 minutes reading it, unless she's got an abbreviated version.
Have to do the whole thing.
Give us, give us, give us the, uh, Cliff Notes version of the resolution, please.
Okay, all right, well, as Cliff Notes is, I can get it. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act requires that all public meetings be opening, uh, and include members of the public. And whereas the Open Public Meetings Act also permits the exclusion of the public from a meeting in certain circumstances. And whereas the planning board is of the opinion that such circumstances exist. Now therefore be it resolved by the planning board of the township of Long Hill County, Morris, State of New Jersey as follows. The public shall be excluded from the executives, the executive session of August 10th, 2021. The general nature of the subject matter to be discussed is as follows, contract negotiation professional services contract. Uh, minutes of said discussion will be made available as soon as it is deemed in the public's interest to do so. The planning board may take official action on those items discussed in executive session upon completion of the executive session. This resolution takes effect immediately.
Can I have a motion?
Still moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
All right.
We're back in.
Recording is back in progress, executive session has been adjourned.
Fine, uh, if there is no other business, it is now 10:33 and I'd like to have a motion to adjourn the meeting.
I'm moved. Second.
All in favor?
Hi.
Good night, all.
Good night.
Good night, all.
Good night.